having a great deal of knowledge of the city's older infrastructure.[36.23-38.13][S01] He was also a retired police officer.[38.63-40.87][S01] He served our community for over 50 years.[41.87-44.87][S01] Known not only for his work ethic but his willingness to help others,[45.11-47.31][S01] neighbors, friends, or strangers.[47.68-50.01][S01] And if he couldn't help them, he could find someone else that could.[50.88-52.05][S01] We need more Teddys in the world.[53.18-55.28][S01] With that being said, let's have a moment of silence.[66.53-69.13][S01] Thank you. Join the Pledge of Allegiance.[70.33-74.27][S01] I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America[74.80-79.44][S01] and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God,[79.74-82.88][S01] indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.[87.85-90.95][S01] All right, Clerk Jones, if you would call the roll, please.[91.02-92.22][S02] The President.[92.32-96.22][S02] The roll call for March 28, 2022.[97.22-98.26][S02] Counselor McCauley.[98.36-99.16][S03] Here.[99.26-100.23][S02] Counselor Preston.[100.33-101.23][S04] Here.[101.30-102.43][S02] Counselor Vogel.[102.53-103.10][S05] Present.[103.17-104.17][S02] Counselor Wallace.[104.27-105.20][S06] Present.[105.27-106.50][S02] Counselor Wright.[106.60-107.10][S07] Here.[107.17-108.04][S02] Counselor Z.[108.10-108.44][S08] Here.[108.50-109.44][S02] Counselor Cameron.[109.51-109.84][S09] Here.[109.91-110.77][S02] Counselor Donahue.[110.87-111.34][S10] Here.[111.41-112.27][S02] Counselor Khan.[112.37-112.87][S11] Present.[112.94-113.71][S02] Counselor Lane.[113.78-114.21][S12] Here.[115.01-115.88][S02] Counselor Shan.[116.21-116.71][S01] Present.[117.11-119.48][S02] We have 11 present, no absent.[119.98-121.88][S01] All right, late files.[122.85-124.25][S02] Counselors, we'll see you on your desk.[124.32-126.99][S02] We've also sent them around. There are four late files.[127.09-129.76][S02] The first one is Order 333.[130.22-134.73][S02] It's the CP Station Supplementary Knoc Tennis Restoration.[135.73-138.03][S02] Violent Order 337,[138.13-142.34][S02] which is an order with respect to the settlement[142.44-146.64][S02] of the High Street paving lawsuit for $150,000.[147.64-151.01][S02] Communication 400, which is a letter from Stephen Jean[151.41-153.65][S02] on the NYAS presentation.[154.15-155.45][S02] And there's Communication...[155.52-158.22][S11] Could you unmute yourself?[159.52-160.82][S11] I'm so sorry. Thank you.[160.89-161.86][S05] Start all over.[166.16-167.63][S02] Maybe someone wants to hear what I say.[171.47-174.94][S02] Communication 400, a letter from Stephen Jean, NYAS presentation.[174.97-180.24][S02] Communication 401, letters regarding the Institution for Savings Settlement.[180.78-184.31][S02] And those four are the late files this evening.[184.61-186.78][S13] Motion to waive the rules and accept the late files.[186.85-187.35][S05] Second.[189.52-191.02][S01] Discussion? All those in favor?[191.22-192.15][S14] Aye.[192.22-193.02][S01] All those opposed?[194.02-195.72][S01] All right, public comment.[196.92-198.36][S01] So, public comment.[198.43-201.43][S01] Richard's going to walk to the chart and pick that one up.[201.46-205.23][S01] If there's anyone in the attendees that would like to raise their hand now.[207.53-212.54][S01] I'm going to do the virtual, I'm going to read out the names that come up first.[212.71-219.18][S01] If I don't see any names, we won't have any comments from the outside.[219.71-224.02][S01] So please raise your virtual hand now if you plan to speak during public comment.[231.83-232.43][S02] Anybody else?[233.43-238.63][S01] Is there anyone in the Zoom call that wants to speak in public comment?[238.67-239.77][S01] Please raise your hand.[241.87-245.67][S01] All right, at this point, there will be no public comment from the Zoom call.[245.74-252.61][S01] And we have three folks, four public comments in the room.[252.71-255.48][S01] So first for public comment is Richard Jaeger.[259.89-261.52][S15] Good evening, everyone. Can you all hear me?[262.22-264.66][S15] Richard Jaeger with 19 Water Street, Apartment 2.[265.46-269.13][S15] I know this time that I was supposed to sign in, as I didn't do that two weeks ago.[269.76-274.77][S15] So looking forward to the opportunity to serve on the planning board.[274.84-278.14][S15] And very much appreciate the opportunity to do so[278.24-282.81][S15] and look forward to working with the city and assisting in any way I can.[283.18-285.01][S15] So I'll just say good evening.[285.58-286.35][S01] Thank you, Mr. Jaeger.[289.45-290.35][S01] Stephen Jean.[293.99-296.39][S16] Good evening. Stephen Jean, 71 Drive, Newburyport.[297.49-300.86][S16] Excuse me. Mayor Ridden, councilors.[300.99-303.63][S16] Thank you for allowing me to speak to you in person this evening.[304.16-307.23][S16] As stated in my letter to the council, I think you all have it in the packet,[307.37-312.11][S16] I wish to express my concern with the Newburyport Youth Services' choice of speakers[312.57-318.11][S16] as a part of the Parenting Years Speaker Series, specifically Debbie Irving.[319.68-326.59][S16] The subject of white supremacy and her whiteness is the primary principle of the political ideology[326.65-328.39][S16] of critical race theory.[329.29-332.63][S16] Newburyport Youth Services should be apolitical[333.23-339.63][S16] and not be allowed to use tax dollars of Newburyport citizens to push any political ideology.[341.20-346.34][S16] Just a few examples of Debbie Irving's political activist career consists of[347.68-353.01][S16] the White Privilege Symposium, which took place in La Crosse, Wisconsin in December,[353.81-359.32][S16] where she discussed her critical race theory literary staple, "Waking Up White."[360.42-363.92][S16] This event was to showcase a trio of keynote speakers,[364.72-367.93][S16] all of which appear to subscribe to critical race theory,[368.86-370.66][S16] Debbie Irving being one of them.[372.20-379.74][S16] Secondly, curator of the 21-day Racial Equity Activism Self-Care Challenge.[380.81-384.81][S16] When white supremacy wears us down to the point of ineffectiveness,[385.38-386.68][S16] white supremacy wins.[387.92-393.25][S16] And finally, an excerpt from one of her advertising pages where she states,[395.42-400.63][S16] "What it took me decades to understand was that constant exposure to 'white as normal,'[401.63-406.73][S16] 'white as right,' 'white as superior' left me deeply racist."[408.37-411.17][S16] Debbie Irving is peddling critical race theory...[411.64-413.04][S01] Mr. Jean, you have 15 seconds.[413.11-416.04][S16] ...where cites whites as the oppressor, blacks as the oppressed.[416.21-420.35][S16] This ideology has no place within Newburyport municipal departments,[420.62-422.72][S16] let alone Newburyport Youth Services.[423.05-427.92][S16] And the city's tax dollars should never, ever be spent on this ideology.[427.96-429.02][S16] There is no place for it.[429.22-434.76][S16] And finally, we as the city of Newburyport should live by what Martin Luther King once stated.[435.46-438.60][S16] "I have a dream that my four little children will one day live in a nation[439.17-444.71][S16] where they will not be judged by the color of their skin but by the content of their character."[445.44-450.21][S16] Debbie Irving, and all she stands for, is moving Newburyport backwards.[450.75-454.05][S16] Let Newburyport judge our citizens by the content of their character,[454.52-456.02][S16] not by the color of their skin.[456.45-456.85][S16] Thank you.[456.92-458.22][S01] Thank you, Mr. Jean.[458.29-458.79][S17] Yes, thank you, sir.[462.22-464.96][S01] All right, next for public comment is Peter Mackin.[468.76-470.43][S18] My name is Peter Mackin.[470.47-472.63][S18] I live at 13 Prospect Street.[472.73-480.71][S18] I'm here to discuss the proposed settlement between IFS, Institute for Savings,[481.11-484.88][S18] and the city of Newburyport with regard to their construction proposal,[484.91-491.59][S18] which went to the court last year and was voted on in this body in November[491.95-497.12][S18] and agreed that that proposal, that settlement, should be declined.[498.42-502.53][S18] It's my understanding that the judge has sent it back to the city of Newburyport[503.43-509.97][S18] and would like to bypass this body and their decision and go directly to the planning board.[510.67-513.31][S18] I'm here to just say a couple things.[513.37-522.62][S18] One is the residents of that area and the entire downtown area will be very much affected negatively[522.85-524.02][S18] by this construction.[524.45-530.26][S18] It is too big, too massive, and out of scale for this historic area.[532.03-537.00][S18] I would encourage any of the new members here to walk down to that area[537.43-542.77][S18] and understand the kind of impact that a building of that size would have on that neighborhood.[543.87-551.48][S18] Finally, with regard to the process, we would like to make sure that residents have an opportunity[551.51-554.55][S18] to speak out about it, understand the process,[554.92-563.42][S18] and reinforce the fact of why, over the last four or five proposals that they presented[564.29-569.23][S18] with our input, they never reduced the size of that project.[569.83-572.83][S18] So with that, I just want to say thank you for your time.[574.60-580.41][S18] And again, if you haven't been in that area, please go down there and visualize[580.44-585.68][S18] how big this building is going to be and how it will change the landscape.[585.98-586.88][S18] Thank you very much.[586.95-587.75][S01] Thank you, Mr. Mackin.[588.92-591.22][S01] All right, that's it for public comment.[594.99-595.86][S01] Mayor's comment.[601.33-602.43][S19] Good evening. How's everyone doing?[604.36-606.00][S19] Good, thanks. It's good to be here tonight.[606.37-610.47][S19] First, I want to wish a very happy birthday to our city clerk here, Richard Jones,[610.50-611.87][S19] who is spending his birthday with us.[617.18-620.11][S19] He's not too happy over here now, but we'll just, we'll move on.[621.22-625.22][S19] First, I want to thank everyone who attended the Newburyport Neighborhoods and City Services[625.25-628.92][S19] meeting last Tuesday, where we kind of released finally the five-year Streets and Sidewalks Plan,[628.96-632.43][S19] I should say rolling, five-year Streets and Sidewalks Plan.[632.79-636.06][S19] I just want to remind everybody at home that this whole plan is living on our website right now.[636.10-639.97][S19] So if you go to cityofnewreport.com, click on Department of Public Services[640.00-644.81][S19] on the left-hand side, you'll scroll down and see where the Streets and Sidewalk Plan lives.[645.44-647.44][S19] This is just going to be an ongoing discussion.[647.48-651.35][S19] I want to call everyone's attention to the Neighborhood and City Services meeting[651.38-655.65][S19] scheduled for tomorrow at 5:00 PM, where we'll be discussing Ordnance 109,[656.45-658.79][S19] which is, again, sidewalk materials ordinance.[659.19-662.59][S19] Again, this all plays into, you know, what we're going to be able to get done here[662.62-664.83][S19] the next five years with our Streets and Sidewalks Plan.[664.89-667.23][S19] So again, if you have any questions, please reach out to my staff.[667.83-668.83][S19] We'd love to hear from you.[669.93-673.10][S19] On the agenda tonight, 59 Low Street and the Brown School, I have.[673.30-675.54][S19] First of all, I hope everyone got this today, my mayor's report.[675.57-678.77][S19] I apologize that it was a little later than I've been trying to get it into you.[679.54-681.54][S19] So again, I will do a better job than that.[682.44-686.95][S19] 59 Low Street, so tonight, we're going to finally see the site plan for 59 Low Street.[688.15-691.89][S19] I just want to remind everyone that this is really just, this exercise we're going through[691.92-693.89][S19] is just to see what we can do at that site.[693.96-697.26][S19] It really shouldn't be assigned to any particular use,[697.33-702.16][S19] even though I've said since the campaign that I do hope that Youth Services ends up at 59 Low.[702.20-705.80][S19] And I hope this is just one more step in the process to moving in that direction.[706.50-708.47][S19] So I'm looking forward to that presentation tonight.[709.74-714.98][S19] Also, let's see, staffing issues, I wanted to just give you a couple updates.[715.98-718.41][S19] No big staffing changes this week.[719.01-721.75][S19] We still have some vacancies at the water department we're trying to fill.[721.78-725.25][S19] And our IT search, even though I did comment that we had a lot of people apply,[725.72-727.42][S19] we just haven't had the right people apply yet.[727.49-731.19][S19] So we're kind of going back to the drawing board as far as the IT search goes.[731.89-734.83][S19] So I will keep you updated as we move through that process.[735.26-739.20][S19] We've had a great amount of resumes sent in for our boards and commissions.[739.23-740.97][S19] We have a number of openings that we're trying to fill.[741.00-743.44][S19] So I encourage the public to keep sending those in.[743.47-744.57][S19] I've had a lot of great meetings.[744.61-748.28][S19] And again, you know, people like tonight with Richard Jaeger going for planning,[748.48-753.05][S19] Sophie Corpus on Commission for Disabilities, and Heidi Newhall on the Cultural Council.[753.25-756.45][S19] Again, I think, you know, this is going to be, the next couple of weeks, going to really get[756.78-758.85][S19] some new blood on some of these boards and commissions.[758.89-762.86][S19] And again, I'm looking forward to really getting people involved[762.89-765.93][S19] and more people volunteering here in the city.[766.76-769.26][S19] Also in your packet tonight, you're going to see the three ARPA projects,[769.86-773.13][S19] the orders for the three ARPA projects that the ad hoc committee has identified.[773.17-774.77][S19] These were all unanimous choices.[775.20-778.01][S19] So again, I believe the next step is they'll get sent to Budget and Finance,[778.04-781.04][S19] so we can talk about those more once they reach that committee.[781.08-782.91][S19] But we're really excited about these three projects.[783.21-785.58][S19] One of them is the first year of Streets and Sidewalks.[785.61-792.15][S19] So that's a critical piece in, again, in launching this five-year plan to help bulk up our city infrastructure.[793.52-795.89][S19] And again, if you have any questions about that, please reach out to my staff[795.92-797.89][S19] and we'll be happy to talk to you about that.[799.63-802.93][S19] April 1st, the CIP is due, so internally, we're going through that.[802.96-806.33][S19] And now we're comparing it to our newly completed Capital Facilities Master Plan,[806.36-810.67][S19] so we're going to be able to really better prioritize and cross-reference that list[810.70-815.01][S19] and get the plans that we really think are urgent to get to completed at front and center.[816.21-819.58][S19] Community Paradigm had their first visit to the city this past Wednesday, their crew.[820.15-821.85][S19] They got to meet with a lot of department heads.[822.18-823.88][S19] They'll be back next week for another day.[823.92-826.69][S19] We're thinking probably three days total that they'll be spending in the district.[827.19-830.06][S19] District, old habits, in the city.[831.13-833.46][S19] High Street Settlement Packet, you just heard about that, late file.[833.49-835.76][S19] So I look forward to hearing your thoughts on that.[836.33-838.97][S19] And just a couple things from a few other departments this week really quickly.[839.27-842.14][S19] Newburyport Public Library had a great book sale this past weekend.[842.17-844.84][S19] It's their 41st great book, old book sale.[844.87-847.48][S19] They raised almost $10,000, which is pretty amazing.[848.51-851.01][S19] Parks Department, our clean sweep is scheduled for April 30th,[851.05-853.01][S19] so you'll hear me mention that a few more times.[853.68-855.75][S19] That's going to kind of launch initiative here at City Hall,[855.78-858.89][S19] where we're going to try to do a volunteer activity within the community each month.[858.92-860.82][S19] And I think that's going to be the first one we're going to try to do.[860.85-864.82][S19] So I'm going to encourage as many city employees as possible to come out for our clean sweep.[864.86-867.19][S19] That's always a great day, and I've done that for years.[867.23-870.46][S19] So it's a really great way to get out and help our parks here in town.[871.56-875.13][S19] Just a reminder that the yard waste facility is open Saturday,[875.17-876.57][S19] so get ready to get the rakes out.[876.60-878.67][S19] And again, you can get your stickers online.[879.44-883.14][S19] And finally, I just want to mention, Youth Services had the Asset Builder Awards this past week.[883.18-886.55][S19] It was a tremendous event, and Andy Egmont and her crew did a fantastic job.[887.05-890.62][S19] One of the recipients last night was our public health nurse, Pam Palumbo.[891.02-895.52][S19] And she was one of a number of nurses that were recognized that night for all their work[895.55-898.32][S19] these past two years. So I just want to give Pam a shout out for all the great job[898.52-901.36][S19] and also all of our school nurses across the city.[901.66-903.86][S19] And that is it for my report tonight.[904.76-905.33][S01] Thank you, Mayor.[905.53-906.33][S19] Thank you.[906.40-907.27][S01] Questions? Counselor Vogel.[907.37-907.80][S19] Counselor.[907.87-910.37][S20] Yeah, Mayor, I'm probably not the only one.[911.31-913.41][S20] Didn't we buy 57 Low Street?[913.88-914.68][S19] We did.[914.74-915.68][S20] In fact, I want that building.[917.41-918.55][S19] I tried to sneak that one by you.[918.58-920.05][S19] We actually bought two buildings that day.[920.08-921.62][S19] No, Kim will address that.[921.65-925.32][S19] But we've discovered that it's actually 59 Low Street, not 57.[925.35-928.82][S19] So you guys were all looking at the wrong building for those two years, so.[928.99-930.19][S20] But what did we buy?[931.22-934.63][S19] We bought it all, so I'll let the site plan speak for itself as far as that.[934.66-936.23][S19] But yes, good observation.[936.26-938.33][S20] I think the other building would be just fine as well.[939.87-940.37][S20] Thank you.[941.07-942.74][S21] Yes, thank you, Mayor.[942.80-946.67][S21] I just, you may have already said this, but the Capital Facilities Master Plan,[946.71-949.98][S21] which we'll see, I'm assuming that also includes the school buildings?[950.04-953.75][S21] Because I think we've been asking about, you know, what I'm envisioning.[953.78-959.82][S21] And we talked about education is understanding, like, the equipment at the, like, the Knoc and the Mullen.[960.02-961.12][S21] So will that include that?[961.15-963.09][S19] I think we're eventually tying that in, not right now.[963.12-964.69][S19] But I think the plan is to, yes.[964.76-965.26][S21] So right now, the schools...[965.33-966.33][S19] Right now, it doesn't have it in.[966.36-966.86][S21] It doesn't.[966.93-968.13][S21] Okay, so I would just request that at some point...[968.83-971.27][S21] It's been coming through the Education Committee conversations.[971.30-974.10][S21] But to also get that same kind of, and I haven't seen this yet,[974.13-975.37][S21] but also for the school buildings.[975.44-976.64][S19] It would be nice if it all lived in the same place.[976.71-978.34][S21] Yes, yeah. So I'd love to make that request.[978.41-978.81][S19] Yep.[978.84-979.34][S21] Thank you.[980.68-981.31][S19] Anybody else?[983.18-983.78][S19] Counsel Lane.[983.85-986.01][S22] Any updates on the bid for Phillips Drive?[986.41-992.32][S19] Yes, so I owe you an update because I did send some out to the Phillips Drive crew.[992.35-995.32][S19] So actually, John Eric will be on tonight, too.[995.35-997.22][S19] So I don't know if he wants to mention that real quickly.[997.26-998.69][S19] But we're still in the process.[999.76-1001.03][S19] Information's going back and forth.[1001.06-1004.83][S19] So right now, it looks like mid-April is our target date for the bid finally going up.[1005.23-1005.73][S19] Thank you.[1005.76-1006.26][S19] Yep.[1007.67-1008.77][S19] All right, everyone, have a great meeting.[1008.87-1009.37][S01] Thank you.[1014.01-1017.98][S02] The consent agenda this evening consists of the approval of the minutes for March 14.[1018.85-1020.05][S02] There are three communications.[1020.08-1025.69][S02] Communication 398, which is a memo from DHCD on housing choice briefing.[1025.72-1028.86][S02] That's to go to Public Planning and Development and Committee of the whole.[1029.42-1036.13][S02] Communication 399 is the FY23 Capital Improvement Plan and Budget Workshop Schedule,[1036.16-1039.43][S02] submitted by Counselor Z. That's to be received and filed.[1040.37-1048.84][S02] The application 67 is the, once again, annual application for the Road Race,[1049.54-1055.65][S02] sponsored by the Newburyport Lions Club, to be held 8/2/2022.[1056.22-1059.85][S02] It'll be right during Yankee Homecoming. That's to go to Public Safety.[1060.22-1062.62][S02] There's no transfers, no appointments.[1062.82-1068.13][S02] However, the following items are taken out of their committees on the vote for the consent agenda.[1068.83-1073.73][S02] Budget and Finance Transfer 122, Orders 327, 328.[1074.23-1076.60][S02] License and Permits Order 329.[1077.04-1080.14][S02] Neighborhood and City Services Ordnance 106.[1080.24-1082.91][S02] That's the table ordinance on the COA.[1083.71-1086.85][S02] Then Planning and Development has Appointment 306.[1087.31-1089.98][S02] Public Safety has Communication 397.[1090.02-1091.72][S02] That's the consent agenda this evening.[1092.85-1093.59][S01] Counselor Khan.[1093.69-1097.32][S23] Yes, Counsel President, may I request to remove the minutes[1097.36-1099.66][S23] from March 14th out of the consent agenda, please?[1100.59-1101.56][S01] All right, the minute.[1106.43-1107.33][S01] All those in favor?[1107.57-1108.10][S14] Aye.[1109.24-1109.74][S01] Opposed?[1110.27-1110.77][S01] All right.[1113.31-1113.81][S01] Sure.[1113.84-1117.51][S24] I thought all we had to do was request that something come out of the consent agenda.[1117.91-1118.81][S19] Yeah, I think the...[1118.88-1119.61][S05] Request a vote?[1119.98-1122.75][S19] The vote, I think, was on approval.[1122.85-1123.62][S05] Oh, I'm sorry. As amended.[1123.65-1124.15][S05] Sorry, thank you.[1124.62-1128.02][S01] Okay, so the minutes are out, so regular agenda.[1129.22-1132.13][S01] So first on the list is the presentation for Low Street.[1132.93-1135.73][S01] And I will share the presentation.[1140.17-1141.47][S25] Good evening, city councilors.[1142.84-1146.01][S25] It's very exciting for me to be here tonight in front of you in this new capacity.[1146.71-1153.68][S25] Tonight, I would like to present to you the site feasibility plan for 59 Low Street.[1153.71-1157.22][S25] And just to piggyback off of the question that Counselor Vogel just asked.[1157.25-1160.32][S25] So it's not a rebranding, although it sort of is.[1160.99-1166.16][S25] So what happened is the larger parcel, which includes the Armory Building and the Powder House,[1166.19-1170.73][S25] also included this building that we've been discussing, and when the property was split,[1171.46-1176.97][S25] the Planning Department and the assessor thought it might be easier to renumber 57 Low Street.[1177.00-1180.81][S25] And this is now 59 Low Street, so there's no confusion over which building is which.[1180.84-1182.11][S25] So this is the new parcel.[1182.94-1186.31][S25] Still the same property we've been discussing, it's just got a new number.[1187.41-1190.45][S25] So when I say 59 Low Street, I'm still talking about that same building.[1191.42-1194.25][S25] So just to backtrack and give kind of a broad overview,[1194.29-1199.16][S25] the purpose of tonight's presentation is really to comply with condition number three[1199.63-1206.73][S25] of the January 31, 2022 order, in which the city council voted to approve the acquisition of 57 Low Street.[1208.03-1212.17][S25] I've written down the conditions of that order on this slide here.[1212.20-1215.41][S25] But really, tonight, what we're looking at is condition number three,[1216.38-1220.88][S25] which really is about the mayor and city council agreeing that the city engineer[1220.91-1225.22][S25] would complete an engineered site plan, including a yield analysis for the property[1225.85-1229.52][S25] in order to guide future decisions on the final use of the property.[1229.56-1233.03][S25] And that was supposed to be completed by March 31, 2022.[1233.06-1234.73][S25] So we are right on time.[1235.56-1236.43][S25] Next slide, please.[1239.83-1244.67][S25] Great. So just to give you a brief update of what's occurred over the last two months.[1244.70-1249.34][S25] So on February 8, the city did receive the deed for 57 Low Street.[1250.14-1253.38][S25] And again, I just described why it's been renumbered as 59[1253.91-1255.62][S25] through the assessors and planning department.[1255.95-1259.69][S25] That piece has been divided off of the larger parcel.[1260.35-1264.52][S25] And again, looking specifically at the third condition of that order,[1264.92-1269.29][S25] what I want to present to you tonight is that engineered site plan and yield analysis[1269.33-1276.50][S25] showing the components, that the components of the uses can be arranged to fit on the site[1276.77-1280.91][S25] within the parameters of the current zoning and wetland restrictions[1281.27-1285.61][S25] and also within the parameters of the parking and stormwater requirements.[1285.91-1288.88][S25] So really, this is kind of a, I'm calling it a proof plan[1288.92-1294.25][S25] that shows that all the components can fit within the regulations as they currently stand today.[1295.62-1302.03][S25] That, you'll have to see this plan prior to any deliberation on an approval of a zoning change for the property.[1303.43-1308.50][S25] Staff and the incoming administration reviewed a lot of the background information over the last couple of months[1308.53-1310.00][S25] and the desires for the site.[1310.04-1314.54][S25] We met with the mayor's office, city engineer, planning director, conservation agent,[1314.57-1317.91][S25] and Youth Services Director Andy Egmont.[1319.18-1324.52][S25] Also, test pits were dug on the site so that we could determine the capacity for stormwater management.[1324.55-1328.99][S25] And John Eric is on the call tonight if there's any specific questions for him.[1330.49-1335.96][S25] We also determined with the, I did meet with the Conservation Commission a couple of weeks ago[1336.00-1339.13][S25] that because this wetland flagging was done in 2019,[1339.93-1343.14][S25] we will be required to re-flag it because it is three years old.[1343.87-1348.31][S25] And we plan to do that in relatively short term under an RDA process,[1348.34-1350.85][S25] which is a request for determination of applicability.[1351.48-1354.55][S25] It's a pretty streamlined process with the Conservation Commission.[1355.48-1360.02][S25] However, I can tell you that both Julia Godfritzsen and I have been out to the site numerous times.[1360.05-1363.72][S25] We've taken some core samples of the soil and looked at the vegetation.[1364.39-1368.33][S25] We have no reason to believe that the wetland flagging will be any more impactful[1368.36-1370.56][S25] on the property than it is currently.[1371.16-1375.07][S25] In fact, it might, there are areas where it could be pushed back slightly.[1375.10-1379.64][S25] But we won't, we won't really know for sure until we can go through this RDA process[1379.67-1382.84][S25] and have a wetland scientist take a harder look at this property.[1384.01-1388.02][S25] And finally, the engineered site plan, which was drawn for the presentation this evening.[1388.25-1389.75][S25] If you want to go to the next slide, please.[1390.25-1394.89][S25] So this is the existing conditions plan that you all should be fairly familiar with.[1395.42-1401.96][S25] This was the plan that was created prior to, you know, the deliberation about the purchase of the property.[1402.00-1407.73][S25] It shows, again, that larger parcel to the south, which includes the Armory and the Powder House.[1407.77-1411.44][S25] And you can see the new property line that splits the two pieces.[1411.47-1417.11][S25] So we're looking at 59 Low Street to the north and 57 Low Street to the south.[1417.68-1420.45][S25] The wetland line sort of arcs through.[1420.48-1423.28][S25] There's a swale that runs between the two properties.[1423.32-1432.86][S25] And then the associated buffer lines are dotted in to show you the extents of the conservation buffers.[1433.16-1434.03][S25] Next slide, please.[1435.96-1438.93][S25] So here is the engineered site plan.[1438.97-1445.00][S25] And what we did is we really, I worked closely with the city engineer, both John Eric White[1445.04-1454.85][S25] and Diane Gagnon, to create kind of a plan that would show the most square footage[1454.88-1458.99][S25] that we believe you could fit on the site under the current regulations[1459.02-1463.26][S25] and the associated parking that would need to correspond to that square footage.[1463.32-1469.83][S25] So we are showing one parking space per every 500 square feet of footprint of building.[1470.93-1474.87][S25] With, you know, these are nine by 18 standard parking spaces.[1474.90-1479.34][S25] There's one handicap accessible parking space to the south there.[1479.84-1484.51][S25] And sidewalks, so this kind of shows, it's almost, I'll call it the yield plan.[1484.54-1488.71][S25] This is sort of the maximum development that we can, that we thought was reasonable[1489.25-1490.85][S25] and conservative on this site.[1491.72-1493.79][S25] And then in the back, towards the rear of the building,[1493.82-1500.43][S25] you'll see the footprint of the associated surface detention basin for stormwater management.[1501.06-1505.63][S25] And that is based on real-world conditions and the test pits that were dug earlier in the month.[1506.13-1509.54][S25] If you want to go to the next plan, which might be a little easier for you folks to read[1510.10-1515.91][S25] because it's in color, this is just a reiteration of this engineered site plan that you just saw.[1516.28-1517.31][S25] It's a little bit clearer.[1518.91-1523.12][S25] Just showing the layout of the parking configuration and the building.[1524.05-1527.39][S25] The thinking here, if this were used for Youth Services,[1527.42-1530.59][S25] is that the existing building would be renovated in place.[1531.56-1535.56][S25] And then a modular gym building could go on the front of it.[1535.59-1540.50][S25] And then you can see some associated sort of play space in the elbow of the building[1541.27-1545.01][S25] and all of the associated parking that would be required for that.[1546.61-1550.31][S25] If you want to go to the next slide, it will just kind of give you a review of what you just saw.[1550.34-1559.92][S25] So again, this plan shows reuse of the existing building with an associated prefabricated modular gym,[1560.42-1562.42][S25] which could be phased in over time, I might add.[1563.06-1565.63][S25] This is all based on the current zoning setbacks.[1565.66-1567.73][S25] So the 20-foot setbacks are intact.[1568.26-1574.53][S25] The 25-foot wetland buffer, based on the 2019 flagging, has not been impinged upon in any way.[1574.57-1578.00][S25] So there'd be no wetlands replication needed for that plan.[1578.64-1582.01][S25] And one parking space per 500 square feet of building footprint.[1582.84-1586.35][S25] And again, this is a conservatively sized surface detention basin,[1586.58-1590.52][S25] again, based on the soil test pits that were done beginning of the month.[1591.89-1595.02][S25] What this will require, we're not asking for any action tonight,[1595.05-1600.63][S25] but what this will require eventually from the city council is a new zoning to allow for[1601.96-1606.13][S25] the community center use if this plan is accepted.[1606.97-1609.20][S25] And I believe that might be my last slide.[1609.97-1611.04][S25] Nope, next steps.[1611.10-1617.61][S25] Okay, so the first thing we will want to do regardless is to file an RDA with the Conservation Commission.[1617.64-1622.32][S25] And again, that's a streamlined process where we really just set the wetland flagging in place.[1622.72-1625.72][S25] That flagging is good for three years, which is why we need to do it now[1625.75-1627.92][S25] because the current flagging is three years old.[1630.06-1634.73][S25] We are in the process of getting quotes from three different architectural firms[1634.76-1639.87][S25] to look at the interior space and how it might be arranged for Youth Services,[1640.54-1642.60][S25] including a modular prefabricated gym.[1642.63-1646.11][S25] So we're doing some due diligence there to get some three different quotes,[1646.14-1647.91][S25] which we should have by the end of this week.[1650.11-1654.25][S25] And then based on the new information we receive from wetlands[1654.78-1657.02][S25] and as, you know, other information becomes available,[1657.05-1661.49][S25] the goal is to really revise and sort of massage the site plan into two,[1661.99-1665.32][S25] potentially two design options for review.[1666.23-1670.66][S25] And then we will be requesting that that zoning change be considered.[1671.53-1678.17][S25] And then, once that happens, we can prepare sort of a phased, a phased plan with associated costs.[1678.20-1680.21][S25] It's impossible to really do that at this point[1680.24-1684.88][S25] because we don't know exactly what the interior space configuration will be.[1684.91-1688.02][S25] So we'll have more information as we get information from architects.[1689.15-1696.22][S25] And I should note that all of this will be done simultaneously with review of where a parks facility[1696.25-1700.36][S25] would need to go and also with information about the Brown School,[1700.39-1704.26][S25] which I understand that there is an ad hoc that will potentially be put together.[1704.29-1709.77][S25] So that, that information will be important to directing this, this site as well.[1710.67-1712.47][S25] So that's the information I have for you tonight.[1712.51-1713.44][S25] If there's any questions.[1713.47-1717.81][S25] Like I said, I believe John Eric is on the phone as well as if anyone has any questions[1717.84-1718.91][S25] about stormwater management.[1724.08-1724.58][S01] They are.[1741.31-1741.94][S01] Do you have a question?[1746.11-1746.84][S01] Questions, anyone?[1749.75-1750.38][S01] Counsel Donahue.[1750.41-1752.11][S26] Sure, just a quick question.[1752.75-1756.25][S26] I just wanted to make sure the one handicap spot will be van accessible?[1756.28-1756.78][S26] Is that correct?[1756.85-1757.35][S26] Yes.[1757.38-1757.88][S26] Okay.[1759.22-1760.02][S26] That was all. I yield.[1762.59-1763.42][S01] Further questions?[1764.92-1766.56][S27] Just a process thing.[1766.63-1770.53][S27] They're saying, I got an email saying the Zoom volume isn't...[1771.77-1773.07][S27] You've left your one angle here.[1782.58-1783.85][S01] Yep, you're not muted.[1783.88-1785.61][S28] Who's volume, just in general?[1785.95-1787.35][S27] It was somebody on the Zoom.[1787.42-1788.22][S28] Yeah.[1788.28-1789.02][S28] This can go up.
Further questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving onward, mayor's update. All those in favor? Opposed? All right. First reading appointments. Oh, go ahead. Yes, thank you. I was going to come in. So the meeting minutes.
So the minutes that were pulled out of consent?
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Counsel Con?
I wasn't here.
Okay, okay. So, and Counsel Con, you weren't here either?
Right, correct, exactly. I was going to just recuse or vote present.
Okay. Got it.
Okay.
So is there a second?
Yes, second.
All right. All those in favor? Aye.
Two recused.
Two recused. Okay. All right, thank you, Clerk Jones. All right, moving right along. First reading appointments.
None.
Communications.
We have the late file, which was the letter from Stephen Jean, to which he spoke to a little bit ago. Communication 400.
Motion to refer to me.
Oh, sorry, I was going to say motion to receive and file.
Second.
Discussion? Counsel Z.
I was just going to suggest that we refer it to committee unless, are we going to receive and file all the communications? We tend to refer them, but if we're going to receive and file them, we can.
Counsel Con?
Yeah, thank you, Council President. I think it depends on the content. So I think our next one, communication with the Institution for Savings, might make sense to go with what's already on our agenda regarding the Institution for Savings settlement. But for this one, I think receive and file made sense to me.
Further discussion? Motion on the floor is to receive and file?
Correct.
All right. Counsel Z.
Yeah, I'm just going to oppose, I think if somebody writes us a letter, they're asking us to have a conversation. So I mean, I think we do that fairly routinely, and I don't know why we wouldn't just refer this to Neighborhood and City Services, which is what youth services lives under, under our code.
Counsel Con?
Yeah, thank you, Council President. But we have received other communications that we've received and filed too, so this is not unusual. So in my time on the council, we have received and filed other communications. Thank you.
Motion on the floor is receive and file. Further discussion? Counsel McCauley?
Yeah, I'm going to oppose this as well. I mean, I think we've, we sent a letter to Public Safety last week, that, a communication last week that was not on the agenda, but was a communication that a resident wanted us to talk about the Seibert facility. And, you know, we're giving that person their due as well. And I think this is the only way that some folks who aren't familiar with council process can actually try to get part of the public domain, so, thank you.
So Counsel Wallace?
Thank you. As Chair of Neighborhood and City Services, I would be fine if it came in. I generally like to have everything come into committee, just for the exact same reason, just to have a conversation and we can all learn something.
Okay.
Thank you.
So the motion on the floor is still to receive and file. So do you want to take a roll call vote?
So roll call on the motion to receive and file. Communication 400. Counsel McCauley?
No.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
No.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Z?
No.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Con?
Yes.
Counsel Lane?
No.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Motion passes seven, four. Matters received and filed.
Communication, next one.
Communication 401 is the late file you would have seen on your desk. It's letters with respect to the Institution for Savings settlement.
Motion to receive and file.
But everybody checks their mutes, honestly.
Thank you.
So we can stop torturing this poor girl. Oh, maybe you really did have low battery. Oh, I'm mute on.
Counselor Cameron, for what it's worth, I've been told not to put it in my pocket because it bends the line and sounds like it's muted.
I'll just speak up.
Okay.
Proud of you.
So the motion on the floor is to receive and file?
Receive and file, we need a second.
We need a second.
Counsel McCauley?
I'm going to oppose this again. I think it's the same thing. This is an item on the agenda. We have an item that we're going to refer, we hope to refer it to a committee. I think this should go hand in glove with that type of referral as well. Thank you.
Further discussion? Counsel Wallace?
Again, I agree. I generally like things going into committee so we can vet them and give people a chance to speak. And again, hopefully we can all learn something from it. Thank you.
Counsel Cameron?
There isn't, and correct me if I'm wrong, there isn't a committee item. I mean, we all know about the IFS settlement. We have discussed it in executive session, which I think I'm allowed to say because that's, we posted it as executive session. So I'm not sure where this would go, you know, which committee this would go to, and would we be able to talk about it in committee without going to executive session? I mean, to me, received and file is, we got it, we read it, and it's, it's just filed just as an acknowledgement that we've received it, and, and so it's kind of procedural. So I think that's totally appropriate for something like this. Absolutely take this seriously, as we've gotten other letters from people, so.
So I will comment on this one. We do have Order 332 that will be going to hopefully general government tonight. So I don't oppose having these, these communications go to general government as well. If you look at Order 332. So just giving some feedback here. All right. So the motion on the floor is to receive and file?
That's correct.
All right, another roll call vote.
Roll call for, this is communication 401, receive and file. Communication, I'm sorry, Counsel McCauley?
No.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
No.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Z?
No.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Donahue?
No.
Counselor Con? Counselor Lane?
No.
And Counsel Shan?
No.
Matter's still on the floor.
Motion to refer to general government?
Second.
Further discussion, any discussion? All right. Counsel Z?
Yeah, I was going to say it at good of the order, but I'm, I'm very troubled by the message we're sending about communications here, so.
Wait, point of order? Is that related to the?
Yes, it's a motion to refer. It's, I mean, I defer to the president on your.
All right. As long as we're sticking to this particular communication.
Right. I appreciate that we have the opportunity to refer this to committee. We've all been on the council for some time. I do think this is to remain to the conversation, but I do think that consistency is important, and we've referred a lot of things to committee. I don't understand why something else would have to be on the agenda in order to justify sending it to committee, and I'll yield with that.
May I ask who made the first and second on this?
I have a second. All right. So the motion on the floor is to refer to general government?
Right. Communication 401.
Do you want to take a, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, thank you. Seeing no transfers, second appointments.
Second reading of, of the appointment of Heidi Newfeld, 10 Orange Street, to the cultural council until 3:31, 2025.
Motion to approve on second reading? And I'll add collectively 307 if it's, meets the president's.
307, Sullivan Corpex, 26 Dove Street, Commission on Disability.
All right.
Second?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's take a roll call vote then.
So roll call vote on the appointments 304 and 307. Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Z?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Donahue?
A very proud yes.
Counselor Con?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Excellent.
All right. Moving on to our long list of orders.
The first order is 30, I'm sorry, 330. It's a license agreement between the city and the Friends of Plum Island Light. It's a 10-year term. It comes in every 10 years, and as you know, I'm old enough to remember.
Motion to refer to planning and development?
Second.
All those in favor say aye? All those opposed say nay? Going to planning and development. Next.
Order 331. It's a loading zone suspension, if you will, on Green Street, the zone immediately in front of Mission Oak, which I think is 26 Green Street.
Motion to refer to public safety? Second.
Counselor Donahue, would you like to speak on this one?
Yes, I would, thank you. Just want to give a little, just a little background in where this is coming from for everybody. This was sort of born of a lot of requests from residents and many veterans to get Brown Square back as a memorial park for the public. And in conjunction with conversations with the owner of Mission Oak Grill, he did not have an appetite to try to fill that big park space again, and would really like the opportunity for a parklet like everyone else. So we thought this might be the best laid plan, so we don't have to change the parking spaces on Green Street or redesignate anything. We'll just suspend the loading zone during the outdoor dining season and restore it for the off-season to be used accordingly. If anybody does have any questions, I do invite you to come to the meeting and definitely let's have a talk about it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counsel Donahue. Further discussion? All right, I believe the motion is to move this to public safety.
It is.
All those in favor say aye? All those opposed say nay? All right, the ayes have it. On to public safety. Moving right along. Order 316.
Order 316, President, is council rules for 2022. I received timely, in my opinion, by noon the following day. I noticed reconsider the motion to add Council Rule 20B from Counselor Vogel, and that is why it's in your packet right here. So I think in order would be a motion to reconsider that needs a first and a second. I think that's the first step.
So moved.
Second.
So just to be clear, you're going to motion to reconsider the motion to add Rule 20B, correct? Okay, so that's first and seconded?
Just a point of order, President. I just want to be clear that in the event that a reconsideration of an intermediary motion should pass, it would kill the end result, because I'm not familiar with the allowance to, to reconsider something that happened in the middle. My understanding was you could reconsider the final vote, but to go back into the middle of the process is a bit challenging.
If you want my opinion?
Please.
I think you could. I don't know how else you would do it. I think you're right that it kills the motion to approve as amended, so that if this motion to reconsider was allowed, and then there was a secondary vote taken on the motion to create Rule 20B, since we're reconsidering that, and then if that was allowed, it's the end of the matter. If it is not allowed, then I think we would need to take another vote to approve, whether amendments or without amendments.
Can I just say it another way to make sure I understand? So if the motion to reconsider passes, we rewind the tape to that motion being on the floor?
The one that we want to reconsider?
And we start from that point forward?
Yes.
So all the votes taken after that are null? Voided?
Correct.
Thank you.
If it passes.
Understood.
All right, we're all clear? So I think we need to take a roll call vote on the motion on the floor, which is to reconsider.
Correct. And the motion is to reconsider the motion to add Rule 20B, so.
I'm sorry, Counsel Z?
I'd just like to understand why we should reconsider this before I vote. I don't understand. If somebody could explain it, maybe I could be compelled to, to vote yes.
Counsel Vogel?
I'm happy to take that on. Thank you. It was actually part of my introduction is that we were going to talk on debating, but, so to be clear, right? There was a unanimous vote of the number present, which was nine. And for me to vote yes, it was actually a procedural move, if you will. I recognized that the motion was going to pass. During the debate, I had, I had asked the Ward One counselor to not move it, but to give it some time for consideration, and that was denied. I felt that it was an important point. I do feel it's an important point. Mundane as it may be, and only our rules as it may be, I'm standing here because of procedural items and the way we do business. So I voted in favor, which put me on the side of the, the winning side, which allows me the next day before noon to ask that we reconsider. That gives me the opportunity to present my arguments. It was late in the evening. It was really at the end of the evening. In my personal opinion, I think we were kind of done. I don't think there was a lot of time spent. I also, the, the verbiage that came from the clerk was sort of different than what I had heard, and I thought it would be appropriate to reconsider and talk about it again in a little bit more depth with a little bit more information that I've gathered.
Further discussion? All right. Counsel Preston?
So I actually am thankful for the opportunity to reconsider this. You know, I, I voted yes at our last meeting as a concession, because I truly believe that compromise is the way to get things done. And, you know, as, as I've thought about this in the reconsideration, I do think the state was very correct in making sure that the appointment of the health director is, is not subject to city council approval, because I think it's so important to not politicize that role. I think the pandemic that we have lived through over the last few years has further accentuated the point that public health should not be a politicized role. And therefore, in retrospect, I actually realized that I cannot live with that concession and that compromise. I want very much for this appointment to, to not come back to us. And, you know, I, I found the concession and the compromise because ultimately it was a rubber stamp, right? We're not really making a difference in this. It was more that it would go to public safety to essentially create an opportunity for a meeting. The truth is, we as city counselors have the opportunity every day to meet with the director of public health. And therefore, I really don't feel that there is a need to create a rule to send this new appointment, which again, is not within our purview. Why would we be creating this rubber stamp of sending this person to public safety when we have the opportunity to meet with this person any day when we want to meet them within their office hours? And therefore, I will vote no. Well, actually, I will not allow for the amendment to move forward.
So you're going to vote yes on the reconsider?
So I'm a yes on the reconsider. Thank you.
Counsel Con?
No, sorry, just, I was just clarifying that we're voting on the, whether or not to.
To remand.
To remand, okay.
To reconsider it.
Reconsider.
Counsel McCauley?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not going to vote in favor of the remand. I don't know if that's yes or no at this point. But I'm not going to. And the reason being is, Counsel President, our rules state currently that the health director is subject to a, an additional meeting with the appropriate committee. That's what our rules say. And what we, what we did is we amended our rules to accommodate, you know, this process, so that we took them out before, you know, we amended it to take it out going forward. But our current rules, as we state right now, say that But our current rules, as we state right now, say that the Health Director is one of the people in the list, regardless of what the state says. We're not here to re-interview the person. We're not here to relitigate any of the negotiation that happens in an HR. We were here, like everyone else, in a public safety measure to get some insight into what the priorities were, like we do in planning and development for the planning board or anything like that going forward. So I'm, thank you. I yield.
Gotcha.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that what we're talking about here is whether or not we should have this discussion about the issue at hand. We're a little bit out of sync here.
All right. Counselor Zede. And this is going to be the last round here.
Yeah, thank you. Specifically on the reconsideration, I just want to say that I have not, in my time on the council, seen a reconsideration used in this way. And it's a bit of a challenge to wrap one's head around purposely voting yes on something solely for the purpose of getting yourself back to a reconsideration. Is it a valid procedural move? But that's a different question than is it a wise procedural move? When we come up with, when we negotiate on this floor and we come up with so-called compromises, it's, there's some trust that goes into that, that we consider that we've come to that agreement and we've moved forward. So that just makes me a little bit wary of, okay, we come to some agreement and then some may be voting yes solely for the purposes of putting themselves, because yes, you have to be on the side of the winning side, the prevailing side, in order to do so. So I just wanted to state that publicly.
So I think Counselor Wright hasn't had a chance to speak yet.
Thank you, Counsel President. Even though this is a very non-content, you know, it's a non-contemptious issue, the precedent that we're establishing tonight in allowing this to go forward has to have a very high bar. Because if it doesn't, it means that we can undo any vote where the prevailing side has said that they voted yes. And so I just want to be on the record stating that we should all hold ourselves to that very high bar. Because if we don't, we will be in a quagmire of reconsideration votes for everything that we vote yes on.
Thank you, Counsel Wright. Further discussion. All right, so the motion on the floor is still to reconsider.
Motion on the floor is to reconsider the motion to add Rule 20B. Are we ready, Counsel President?
Yes.
Counsel McCauley.
So, point of order. Is a yes, I want to reconsider, and a no, I don't want to reconsider?
A yes means you will reconsider that motion.
No.
A no means you will not.
I'm a no.
Counselor Preston.
Yes.
You are a yes. Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counsel Wallace.
No.
Counselor Wright.
No.
Counselor Zede.
No.
Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Donahue.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
No.
Counsel President.
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes six to five. So that means the motion of consideration passed. Now on the floor is the motion to create Rule 20B.
Motion to approve.
So I'm sorry, the motion is the amendment, the original amendment?
So we're reconsidering that motion. So that motion would now be on the floor, since we're, it's as though the previous votes had not taken. So we're back to that motion. So I hope I'm clear about that. So the motion, no?
My motion to amend is now on the floor.
Your motion to amend. Not the motion to approve is amended, but the motion to amend by adding Rule 20B is on the floor for discussion. Needing a motion. Did I hear?
I motioned to approve.
Was there a second?
I'll second.
Yeah.
The amendment is on.
Not to put words in your mouth, is.
Motion to approve the amendment.
Rule 20B.
Yeah, 20, yes.
You don't have to yell at me.
And that, well, no, I know, but we're, excuse me.
So 20, okay, I just want to be.
It's procedural. It's motion to approve, now it's a debate. And we're a vote on the side.
I just want to be very clear about every step we take.
So I think as a point of order, it would be appropriate for the original person who presented the motion to re-motion. So I'm moved.
Okay.
Just make it easy.
Second.
Were you the original second?
No, I was the original motion.
Who was the original second, yeah? That I don't remember.
So Counselor Zede, and then Counselor Vogel.
Yeah, so I think at this juncture, we're returning to the merits of the amendment. And it seems like the reconsideration centers around the role of the council. And the role of the council and the role of the mayor and the role of the Board of Health, we now understand, are really dictated by state law. However, what we seem to have forgotten in the intervening two weeks is that, as the Ward Five Counselor had originally identified, in some ways, everything comes under the council, everything comes under the purview of the council at some point or another. And typically, it's in the process of the budget. And one of the arguments that I made, and that I think maybe others would make as well, is that this gives a little bit of a softer opportunity to have a conversation with a potential appointee and identify if the council's unhappy with the appointment. It does not mean the council now has a bite at that apple or can deny the appointment or can override the Board of Health. We've already identified that the mayor doesn't. But it's much better than having a discussion during the budget process on a specific line item when there is unhappiness. This is not abstraction, it's not philosophy. There have been concrete examples where we've had directors of health specifically that have been sort of unpalatable to the community and through other maneuvers were replaced by new people. So this is not purely philosophical. I thought it was a fairly benign amendment to just refer to committee, which by the way, even if the rule does not state we must, could always be motioned by a counselor and by a vote of six, could be sent to committee for discussion. We just had this happen, again, to make it very practical. It went to committee, it's coming out tonight. I mean, we haven't had it yet, so we can't say how it went, but it seems to me that it went fine. We meet with applicants all the time, board, potential board appointees, we meet with other department heads who are being appointed. So I think that to just shrink this down to the lowest common denominator, the council doesn't have any role in the Health Director's appointment, is, I think, a bit of an oversimplification. And again, I would just refer to the actual language. It was stated that maybe it was a little different than what was heard. But just to be clear, the amendment basically is, the Health Director moves from a mandatory referral to a, you know, a referral down below, but with the addition that it's just for receive and file. So it's actually softening our existing rule. And for that reason, I ask you to support it again, so that we don't run into maybe throwing out all the other rule changes that we made because we can't agree on this one amendment. Thank you.
May I state one thing? I've thought about it further. I think Counselor Wright's absolutely right. The motion really didn't need to be remade. It was on the floor, living. And it was, I just looked it up, it was made by you, seconded by Counsel McCauley, and I think it bears repetition if I read it, because it's exactly what you said. The motion, "men was to add Rule 20B, the Health Director upon appointment by the Board of Health shall be placed in the packet for referral to the Committee on Public Safety for review and recommendation to the full council as a receive and file." That was it. That's what's on the floor.
Counselor Vogel first, then Counselor Cameron.
Thank you. If I may, through the chair, I mean, it's interesting that there's an argument being made that we want to send a, send it to committee to receive and file when we just had a discussion about things coming in and not just being received and filed. So that's a little bit off of my notes, but I will add that. So the difference here, what is happening, is that there is a state law that says essentially, I mean, I can read it to you, you've read it, it's come to you, but it essentially says that we do not have purview, we do not have influence on the appointment of the Health Director. And if you look at the state law and you research it, you will find that the reason that elected officials don't have that purview, don't have that connection to having the Health Director appointed, is because somebody, some restaurant owner, such as myself, could politicize it. I can say to the Health Director, you know what, your reappointment is coming up. I could get the votes. You know, I have a little bit of difficulty with the Health Inspector that comes along. Could you talk to them and let them know that they don't need to bother me? That is politicizing it. And that is what state law is all about, and that's why we are out of the loop. Here's the thing. We have plenty of opportunity to talk to appointments, or appointees. We do it, we rubber stamp, generally speaking, though I will tell you that I do make phone calls, I do talk to appointees. Then they come to the floor and they essentially get rubber stamped. We have plenty of opportunity to talk to any appointee. It comes in the packet, and you can seek out that person and you can communicate with them. A couple of weeks go by, because when it comes in, it has to go, it can't be voted on that night, you have time to talk to that person. And you can bring back to the council whatever it is you feel. But to put it into a procedure and to put it into the rules that it must go to a committee is really going, in my mind, around what the law is. We do three things as a city council. We really do. And this is how we, this is how we communicate, this is how we create policy, this is how we work with the administration. One, we hold the purse strings. Clearly, that's our biggest, biggest, if you will, our biggest club, because we approve expenditures. The second thing that we do is we make laws, and theoretically, we make laws that are forwarding our community, that are addressing issues by our constituents. And perhaps even on a broader level, are answering the needs of the master plan. And thirdly, we approve appointments. And it is through those appointments that we can mold, if you will, the administration or the culture of what happens here in City Hall. So the procedure, if you really want to affect an appointment of the Health Director, who is only one person, it's not like the board, it's not like the planning board, where you would have to address, you'd have to get however many of those 11 people to vote in your favor, or the zoning board. But this is one person that you can influence. If you want to be able to dictate the philosophy of the Health Director, and you want a Health Director say that does not mandate masks in a pandemic, or whatever it is that you don't want, your influence, our influence, is through the appointments of the Board of Health. The Board of Health is our connection. The law is clear. You read the law. So we're going around the law. We should not be, and then secondly, if we do interview in committee the Health Director and we find this person is inappropriate, then what do we do? Where does it go? What do we, what do we say? Oh, by the way, we interviewed him, we don't really like him. What does that set up? What does that do to us? Right? Now we're at odds with Health Director? We go back to the, we go back to the mayor and say, hey, you just appointed somebody that we don't like? The process has to happen way before that. We have to be on our toes. We have to communicate with the administration, we have to communicate with the potential appointee, and we have to do our work. We don't just let it come in, send it to committee, have that committee go on, then come back and say, oh, they're okay, or they're not okay. And there's law around it. That's the point. We, there was a statement a few city councils back, it's against the law. Well, this truly is against the law. We're going around it. You can read it, it's clear. You have it in front of you. If you'd like me to read it, I'm happy to. I'll just do it real briefly. It says, it says, so what happens is in our section 3-3 of our charter, and our charter's our law, right? It's our law, it's our law. And our law says, "For whom no other method of appointment or selection is provided by law." And so then that law is, in fact, mass general law. And mass general law says, it goes to, it goes to, mass general law says that it goes to, I'll tell you, hang on one second here. "The appointment of the Health Director or agent would be made by the Board of Health as such appointment is provided by the law other than the City Council charter." That's what it says. And it says that it, the may, the Board of Health may employ the necessary officers, agents, and assistants to execute the health laws and its regulations. It's done by the Board of Health, right there in the law. I know it's mundane, it's also, at this point in time, it's sort of moot, because we already have a Health Director who hopefully will be here forever. That would be great. But nonetheless, this is bad rules. This is bad procedure. We should not be dictating this particular issue. We need to leave it alone. I also have one other question. In the, in the, in the verbiage that came from the clerk, part of that amendment, but it, and I, if I may direct this to the motioner of the amendment, wanting to strike the word "mayoral," so instead it just becomes appointment and not "mayoral appointments," now that didn't make it into the packet, but I'm just wondering what the intent was there. Just, and then were you going to take "mayoral" out of the rest of it, or just leave appointment, just take "mayoral"? I don't understand what's going on. And to the point being of overstepping grounds and et cetera, et cetera, I agree. I think that there's a lot of effort that goes on here to move us out of what we do. We do three things. We have a great opportunity to create policy and to create our community and do the best for our community with those three things that we do. We don't need to keep doing more and pressing that line. Thank you.
So Counsel Cameron had his hand up, and then it was Counsel Wallace.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I've come to use the term agnostic, as in I'm agnostic on Proposal A, or I'm agnostic on Proposal Z. I am, you know, I voted for reconsideration. I think it's worth having a conversation if someone feels strongly about that, but I'm going to vote in favor of the amendment that we came up with the last time. I mean, we're not, we're not doing, we're not making an appointment. We could write that we're doing this appointment, and we're still not going to do this appointment. I'm really, I think we're spending a lot of time on this, and all that was, a couple of weeks ago, was simply a way for there to be a referral to committee for, to meet with the candidate after they've been appointed. I think that's fine. Normally, you know, we don't necessarily meet with department heads until budget time unless it's, you know, the Finance Director or the Planning Director. So I really don't, you know, I really don't care either way, to be frank with you, but I'm going to vote in favor of the previous amendment as from two weeks ago.
Counsel Wallace.
Thank you, President Shan. I don't think we're saying that we don't want the Board of Health to appoint them, that we're saying that, yes, they do appoint them. We're just asking to bring them in to have that conversation. It's very normal for your local regulations to be more stringent or be in addition to state regulations. So we're not breaking any laws by this. And it's just getting more information, more transparency, and more collaboration. I mean, I know we all can go in there and meet, you know, the appointee, but the reality is, people are busy, they have jobs, and if someone comes to our meeting, it's just nice to meet them and talk to them, and then they can see our faces. I guess I just, I don't see the harm. But we're not saying it's, you know, we're still letting the Board of Health do their job, but we just want to talk to a department head like we do the other ones, recognizing that there is a separate procedure for them. Thank you.
Is there anyone, so Counsel Lane? All right.
Needs a second.
Second.
So.
Do a roll call on the motion to move.
So do you want to make sure everyone understands what they're voting on?
Essentially end debate. Maybe. Motion to move the question. Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counsel Preston?
Yes.
Counsel Vogel?
No.
Counsel Wallace?
Yes.
Counsel Wright?
Yes.
Counsel Zede?
No.
No? Counsel Cameron?
Yes.
Counsel Donahue?
No.
Counsel Khan?
No.
Counsel Lane?
Yes.
Counsel Shan?
No.
Motion passes six to five. So we now, I think, take a vote on the motion to add Rule 20B that is standing on the floor.
Correct.
It'd be a roll call, I believe.
Please be clear on what we're voting on.
So we are voting on the original motion to add 20B, as previously stated. Simple as that. On that motion, Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counsel Preston?
Wait, I need clarity one more time.
A yes vote would mean that you're supporting that motion to add Rule 20B.
As amended, in our previous discussion.
That's correct.
Okay. Then I'm a no.
Council Vogel?
No.
Council Wallace?
Yes.
Council Wright?
Yes.
Council Zed?
Yes.
Council Cameron?
Yes.
Council Donahue?
No.
Council Khan?
No.
Council Lane?
Yes.
Council Shan?
No.
Motion passes. Which, unless I'm incorrect, that means that we are done because the motion to reconsider was on a narrow sense, only that, was not on the broad sense. So the underlying motion to approve as amended, including that amendment, stands.
Yep.
And along with that, the original motion to approve the rules?
Yes, that's what I thought I said. Yeah. We would then.
All right.
All right.
Onto an easy one.
Order 332, which is the order authorizing the settlement of the Institution for Savings and the Planning Board appeal.
Motion. Sorry. No, go ahead.
I was just going to say to take it collectively with Order 00337, the settlement on High Street paving, both of them to general government.
Second.
Since they're both settlement discussions.
All right, discussion. All right, all those in favor to send both of those to general government, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
President, may I make a motion to send 333, 334, 335, and 336 to Budget and Finance collectively?
You absolutely can.
Can I make a point of order?
Yes.
I'm so sorry about this. Going back to Order 332, though, that is not Committee of the Whole, so it's just going to be general government. And I am wondering if those who made the motion, because I know I would like to speak to that, and can we undo what we just did? I'm kind of waking up here, but I think it'd be helpful if we can make that Committee of the Whole. So I'm asking those who made those motions to consider that.
Okay.
Who are the two?
Motion to waive the rules to take it out of general government and simultaneously refer it back to general government and Committee of the Whole altogether. So suspend the rules, take it out, put it back in with Committee of the Whole.
Both motions?
Would you, do you want the High Street paving too?
I think so, but I.
Then yes.
Should all.
So, I'm standing.
Thank you.
All those in favor of taking it out, putting it back, okay, good, we're all good. All right.
Somehow that's easier than reconsideration.
All right. So Council Zed, you have the floor next.
I was just going to ask to send 333, 334, 335, and 336 collectively to Budget.
Second.
And Finance.
Discussion. All those in favor.
Sure. So I'm going to vote in favor of this, but I do want to call attention to Order Number 333 in terms of the CPC money for the NOC tennis restoration. I am entirely fine with us considering doing that. However, I do have concern here as we move forward with the fact that we are essentially putting, you know, we're asking to have $215,000 to $225,000 put forward for the restoration of some tennis courts. And we continue to have the challenge of pickleball. So CPC has specifically said no to the money that was requested at the senior center for the pickleball. And I see in this that there is an inclination to look for three more tennis courts at the NOC Mullen at some point in the future. And I am not going to say yes to anything moving forward in terms of tennis if we are not looking at pickleball. That, you know, 60%, 60 cents of every dollar of our taxpayer dollars goes to schools. And I, as someone who does not have children, I'm very happy to do that because I believe very much in the development of the next generation of our community. However, the pickleball people deserve a voice here and we cannot continue to say that we can spend all this money for playgrounds and for athletic fields, but continue to say that the pickleball people don't have a voice. And it has specifically been mentioned to them that they will not be entitled to city funds for pickleball courts. And I take great umbrage with that. We need to consider the pickleball people as we move forward.
Thank you, Council Preston. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor for sending those four to Budget and Finance?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, the ayes have it. I think we have two late file orders too, or they were already taken care of?
Taken care of.
Got it. All right, good. Moving right along. Ordinances.
Ordinance 98, the second reading on the permanent parklets legislation.
Motion to approve on second reading?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, roll call.
On the second reading for ordinance 98, Council McCauley?
Yes.
Council Preston?
Yes.
Council Vogel? Yes. Council Wallace? Yes. Council Wright?
Yes.
Council Zed?
Yes.
Council Cameron?
Yes.
Council Donahue?
Yes.
Council Khan?
Yes.
Council Lane?
Yes.
Council Shan?
All right.
Ordinance 107, which is the second reading again for the 15-minute parking spaces downtown.
Motion approved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Council McCauley?
Yes.
Council Preston?
Yes.
Council Vogel?
Yes.
Council Wallace?
Yes.
Council Wright?
Yes.
Council Zed?
No.
Council Cameron?
Yes.
Council Donahue?
Yes.
Council Khan?
Yes.
Council Lane? And Council Shan?
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance 108, which is the second reading again for city council meeting start time, moving it from 7:30 to 7:00 p.m.
Motion to approve on second reading?
Discussion? Roll call.
On 108, Council McCauley?
Yes.
Council Preston?
Enthusiastic, yes.
Councilor Vogel? Council Wallace?
Yes.
Council Wright?
Yes.
Council Zed?
No.
Council Cameron?
Yes.
Council Donahue?
Yes.
Council Khan?
Yes.
Council Lane?
No.
Council Shan?
Yes.
That was a yes.
No.
No, it's a no. Okay. Two no, nine yes, second reading passes.
All right. Committee items. Nothing in economic development, market landing park. I think everybody knows that the variance hearing's on April the 6th. We'll find out from Sasaki how that goes next week. Budget and Finance, Council Zed?
Thank you. Motion to approve transfer 122 from the General Fund, free cash $250,000 to compensated absences in the same amount? Thank you. So the committee met on this, first of all, from a high level, compensated absences reserve fund is, first, it is a reserve fund. So it's not a budget line item, rather, it's just a fund that can be refilled at any time and can be expended from when needed. And the when needed is primarily when retirements occur, and there are contractual obligations that have been made to the employee as a result of union contracts, past, present. And so it may be buyback of sick time, it may be other accruals that may have occurred over the person's tenure for the city. This is not the first transfer that we've made into compensated absences this fiscal year. Actually happened in the last council, but it was still this fiscal year because it was later in the year. We have already transferred $250,000 from free cash at that time. In the intervening months, more retirements basically have occurred, and that's what has necessitated a transfer in. So four more firefighters, two police officers, and one resignation, all totaling something around the area of $378,000. So the 250 we did was augmenting money that was already in there. And so the fund isn't quite depleted, but it's close to there. There are two more anticipated retirements in this fiscal year, which could be in the vicinity of $20,000 to $30,000. So that is the reason for requesting a refill here. Employees of the city are asked to notify the city if they're retiring typically in December, but they're not bound to actually retire, so they may change their mind. And that creates some unpredictability here. We did discuss in committee, you know, do we really need to go up all the way to 250 if we only anticipate $20,000 to $30,000? The finance director was present and stated that, again, retirement could occur at any time. He does, you know, the funds are needed to cover the actual retirements, but that he felt it was good practice to essentially put it up to a sort of a minimum level in anticipation of retirements. We did talk a little bit generally about free cash because we've been seeing little and sometimes big, in this case, big, transfers from free cash. We're at about $1.8 million if this were to pass. And that we do anticipate, as we have seen in years past, having a free cash capital raft, I call it, that basically a number of capital requests, probably within a couple of months, once we really know what the snow and ice deficit is. Hopefully, it will not grow anytime soon, but it was snowing this morning, so you never know. And that finally, you know, there was no average because, again, an individual's employment may have, it could be, but it could be as much as $80,000 for one employee. So 250 may sound like a lot, but how far it goes is really totally dependent. The committee did ultimately come to a three to zero conclusion that we recommend that you approve it, although I would say we did have a little bit of a drift of conversation on free cash and just depleting that or using that. So that's the conclusion of the committee. Thank you.
Further discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right.
Next, I'm going to make a collective motion to approve Order 327, which is the establishment of a parklet maintenance fund, and then 328, which is stabilization fund usage, since they go together. So this is something we talked a little bit briefly about with the parklets legislation a couple of weeks ago. This was the tailing end of it. So essentially, there are two orders here. One is to establish a parklets fund. You have to create the fund first. And then second is both to allocate a percentage of the fee that we're collecting to this fund and then define, you know, how that money can be used and under what manner. So we're getting more familiar with these. They are relatively new in the municipal finance world with the Mass Modernization Act is what allowed cities to create these in the first place. In this case, we're creating the Parklet Maintenance Fund. I think it's fairly bright line here. It's to support the capital and operations of parklets. And we had talked about in the last meeting the idea of segregating those funds so we can understand the fee that we're charging relative to the costs that we're actually incurring. Mass modernization requires you put at least 25% of the fee in to the fund that you're charging, up to 100%. And in this case, we are dedicating 100%. So everything we're collecting for parklets, we are putting into this fund. And it's basically two-thirds for money to come out. So it's six to go in and two-thirds to come out. And that's consistent with other funds that we've created that are of this same type. We did have some questions asked of the finance director. Can we change the allocation of the fee, that 100% in the future? Sure. If we wanted to lower that, of course, 100's the max, but we could go as low as 25. We can make that change. Second thing was, is this a normal thing to do? Is this customary? And the finance director replied that, you know, to him, in his opinion, this made sense. It was what, consistent with what other communities were doing, and he felt it was consistent with what the intent of the Mass Modernization Act, it was to, again, allocate revenue and cost together. Will this be reported in the budget? So it's not a line item in a department, but it is in the appendices. So you'll see that in the coming months. And then a final part that I wanted to mention to you is that we are not able to establish this fund mid-fiscal year because of how the Mass Modernization Act. So this actually will establish on July 1, when the new fiscal year rolls over. And in order to capture the money we're collecting between now and then, the anticipation is that we will have a transfer of those parklets. So we don't lose this season, in other words, to the, I don't want to say lose it to the general fund, but so it's not just mixed into the general fund. The anticipation is that come the fiscal year rollover, Ethan can easily segregate those funds. A transfer will be brought forward to put, to essentially seed this fund for the first time with all the parklet monies that we're collecting. And as we'll see later on, parklets are already flowing, so there is money moving around. And then I think the very last thing is just very practically, we would typically expect to see annual requests for transfers out of this fund, probably around May to help fund the installation. And that may also have some capital to it if they need to purchase new parklet pieces or whatever the things are that go with it. So again, council, committee did discuss in depth on those things and comes to you with a three-zero collective recommendation on both of these. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Just a quick question. That was a great explanation. Thank you. You anticipated a lot of our regular questions. How would the DPS help sell this labor if that is the situation? Does that matter just for capital needs?
You know, I don't know, barriers or planters or those sort of things?
Yeah, so in defining the purpose of the fund, it is pretty general to parklets. So it could be used for capital, which could encompass barriers, it could encompass planters, it could encompass the actual decking, the pedestals. It could also, and anticipated, to meet labor as well. So rather than charging the labor to one of their DPS line items or the very large labor item, they could charge it to this. Again, it will have to come here for a two-thirds to release. So I think, you know, they may probably front-load the labor and then calculate the number of hours and come in and say, this is how much we need to bring it out. It could do it the other way, but I suspect that that may be the way that it's. So long story short, it's written pretty broadly, as long as it's related to parklets.
Yeah, okay. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council Cameron. Further questions? Council Wright?
Council President, if I could just add something quickly. I think I would highly encourage the administration to segregate the labor to go along with this, so that going forward, we have an exact number for what the expenses are. So that would be my only comment and request of administration to do it that way.
Thank you, Council Wright. Good point. Further questions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? No. I'm sorry.
I just, I don't have any other business, but I just wanted to mention that you have the budget schedule in your book, in your packet, and that was done in consultation with both the administration and the council president. So I just want to make sure everybody is aware that there's a special city council meeting in there in June, trying to give plenty of heads up and try and give you a sense for when all the workshops are going to occur and that the CIP is due by Friday. So I understand that you should have it in your inbox by then, and we will formally ingest it into the council process in the next meeting. There'll be a little bit of a delay between when we get it and when we start because I don't want to pull everybody in for too many meetings and department heads. So this year, we had a little better alignment between the charter requirements and the budget and the CIP. And then the other thing I wanted to mention is we'll have a regular budget meeting on Thursday. The CPA tennis courts will be the first thing on if there's interested parties. We have been asked to try and get it out on April 11th, so just so you're aware of the schedule. And that's it for budget. Thank you.
All right, education.
Yes, thank you, Council President. The Education Committee is meeting on Tuesday next week, so April 5, from 7 to 8 o'clock. The Education Committee is meeting on Tuesday next week, so April 5, from 7 to 8 o'clock. And we are probably going to try to do in person at the senior center. The one thing to just call out for the city council is on April 4, the school committee is going to be presenting their budget as well as doing a public hearing. So it will be the full presentation for the public with comments and an opportunity to comment. The next day, which is when we have our Education Committee, the intention is we will have the Finance Administrative people from Central Office of the schools come to our meeting to ask, to answer any questions we might have, but also questions that counselors have that they want to discuss in education. I did get some items from the counselor from Ward 5 that they do plan on having some folks available to actually address, you know, related to the finances of the school. The one other thing that I just want to emphasize is that we are asking with the school committee to really look at the facilities and to give us some kind of a correlation on facilities versus the capital requests, how they map together. The MSBA application for the senior, I'm sorry, the high school building did not go through, and they want to resubmit it as it is. But we are trying to also ask the administration to explain how it looks in moving in the future for future programming, given that there's been a lot of changes in the last three to four years. So we are trying to really get some answers so that might help inform our decision as we make some budget decisions related to the schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Khan. General Government, we will be meeting on Wednesday at 6 o'clock. And I did already have the Institution for Savings on the agenda, so make sure it's listed as Committee of the Whole. We'll also be discussing the Kelly School Funds and the ad hoc for the Brown School. And that is 6 o'clock Wednesday. It will be here in council chambers and also be hybrid, assuming we've got the Zoom meeting working again. All right. License and Permits. Council Lane.
Yes, all I have tonight is the list of applicants for Parklet use. As you can see, it's a little bit interesting that it comes out at the same time we just passed it, but that was the spirit of it, to get everybody in the know of what's going on, who's completed their application, and give you various forms of information, whether they're using parks, whether they're using sidewalks, and just to keep the, keep the project on task.
Got it. I think Council Lane was first.
Sorry, I jumped the gun there.
What is the motion? The motion to approve?
Motion to.
First hand, seconded? First?
Yes.
Second?
Discussion. Council McCauley.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to reiterate what the Chair had said, is that in many ways, we're asking for a little bit of patience with us. We're doing some real-time legislation. The legislation to allow outdoor dining just passed its second reading. All of the restaurateurs have been great in already pre-adhering to the rules that we hadn't yet approved. Their applications are in, they're all posted. Final, I think final approval of, you know, the square footage and things like that will be determined based upon layout with DPS and Licensing Committee along the way. So thank you.
I do have a question. When is the Licensing Commission?
The Licensing, License is waiting for us to forward them so they can have a series of meetings to do that. They have their own. The ask from us is, as the Chair had stated, is to refine these applications so that when they go in to licensing, they're clean, there's better expectations, and we don't put undue stress on the volunteer board going forward. So the ask really tonight is to approve these applications so that we can keep the process going forward. And then we will, you know, circle back once Licensing has approved this as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Further discussion? Council Khan.
Yeah, thank you, Council President. I just had a question about the In Street location, and I'm sorry if I missed this, but I know that's part of the Parks jurisdiction. So may I ask a question to the Chair of the Committee where you guys, or License Chair, or whoever would like to answer this? In terms of in the process, and my apologies for not following it, are they, how is that approval working with the Parks Department?
Council McCauley.
Thank you. So the approval for Parks works this way. We had originally, as you had seen here, we had their approval in here, but they hadn't met on it yet, and so they asked us to remove it. So we'll probably come back and do that. So they were getting the applicant, we were taking the applications at, through the Clerk's office, we were forwarding them to the Parks Department, Parks Commission. They had their meeting last week. They approved Mission Oak for use in the park. He subsequently has had second thoughts on that. And they secondly had approved part of Vera in the back, which is under Parks' control. The front of Vera wasn't in on time, so the Parks will do that. In terms of things like Mandaria and Oregano's, that's within council purview, and so we have those here in front of us as well.
Okay. Can I just follow up? Sorry.
And then Council Z.
So I got a little confused. So we're not approving some of the ones at In Street, or we are? Like the ones, you said some have been pulled, so I'm sorry for.
Oh, I'm sorry. There's, there are, there's one application on, in In Street, which is Vera, which has a front and back. The front is in Market Square, which is listed under Parks jurisdiction. And the rear of Vera, which is In Street Park, and that's under Park. The rest of In Street is under the council's purview. So Oregano and Mandara are under the council's purview, and their applications are here.
Thank you. So we're not approving Vera right now? That's.
No, we do not approve there.
Got it.
Thanks.
I'm set. Thank you.
Council Z.
I was just going to add that in the Parklets legislation, you know, an application is not valid if you don't have approval from the body that has jurisdiction. So that's how we addressed Parks, is you have to go through the Parks Commission. But In Street's a funny thing because it's really just the bottom of In that's actually Parks, it's for street. So I mean, that's council public way, just like everything else. But this will then go to license, and then it will come back. So I think when it comes back is when you really have the final list, if there's been modifications or somebody pulls that they don't want to be in a park. But I know that Vera and Mission Oak were both heard by the Parks Commission and, you know, so, and there were lots of discussions. I hope that helps add to it.
Thank you. Council Vogel.
Thank you. So now that just raises my confusion a little bit. So we're voting on the legislation, but we're not necessarily voting on that whole list?
Council McCauley.
So you're voting on allowing us to proceed?
Yes.
With these applicants for outdoor dining based upon the legislation we just passed so we can refine these and go to licensing and then come back for our final, final approval?
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience.
And y'all thought reconsiderers are hard. Further discussion? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Thank you, Council Lane. And McCauley. We are legislating as we go. All right. Neighborhood and City Services. Council Wallace.
Thank you, President Shan. Motion to approve Ordinance 106, Council on Aging, Ordinance Amendment.
Second.
Do I need to remove it from the table?
Yes.
Motion to remove Ordinance 106.
Second.
Second.
From the table, okay. Now, do I have to redo the other one?
We have to vote on this first.
All right. All those in favor of removing from the table? Aye. Okay. Now.
Motion to approve Ordinance 106, Council on Aging, Ordinance Amendment.
Second.
Second.
Okay. This was tabled last meeting because the primary, or the only sponsor, Councilor Khan was not in attendance. We met a few weeks ago with Paula Burke, the Director on Council on Aging, and Terry Rooney, who was the Chair of the Board of Council on Aging, which is actually different from the Friends of Council on Aging. But this was in relation to some minor revisions for the Board, such as changing some of the term limits from five years to three years, membership requirements, not having to be an actually voting, a registered Newburyport voter, and some just additional cleanup to fix it up because it was a bit outdated. The committee voted in favor three-zero, and I would like to defer to the sponsor to say whatever she wants to say.
Council Khan.
Yeah, thank you, Council President. I'd like to thank the Chair of the Committee as well for a meeting. We had a really good discussion. We talked about the, kind of how the Council of Aging is dictated, its kind of practice and its formation through the MGL references, MGL laws that are referenced in some of the ordinance. The main thing was, it was actually requested from the Board, actually came to me, I think when we were doing the Ordinance Review Committee, and that must have been noted somewhere, and I was kind of reached out to saying, how do we make changes to our Board right now because we are struggling with a couple of things? And then I've attended some of their meetings, and it seemed like, given the nature of the term and the duration of five years, that seemed to have been some kind of a struggle for some people. They wanted to see a little bit more kind of also transition through their Board. So I did do some research looking at other communities on how their Council of Aging was, and it did really vary. I was hoping to find some magic bullet number, what to use, but three years seemed to work well. It was consistent with some of the other boards and commissions. The other main thing, though, too, was this particular formation required that anyone on the Board be a registered voter, and there is no other Board or Commission that has that requirement, which I was really surprised. I looked at throughout the whole ordinance, that was the only one. I tried to see if there was some reference to it at the state level, or why did that language get in there. Couldn't find any reason for it, so that's also one of the changes. It's a strike that the consideration of someone who would be on the Board, Council of Aging Board, to be a registered voter is taken out, but they are going to be a Newburyport resident, which we talked a little bit about as well, since the Council of Aging is used by some neighboring communities, but it really is focused for the residents. Other things that kind of talked about is actually limiting the number of terms, and they requested that we add something that, you know, give it some term limit. And three years with three consecutive terms made it nine years, which they were very pleased with because some people have been serving for over 15 years. So they want to see change, and these were amenable to them, and I hope we could all support it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I like the proposal and I plan to vote for it.
The reason I like it, well, a couple of reasons. One is, I like terms generally that are a little bit shorter. I think it encourages more people to participate because it's easier to make a three-year commitment than to make a five-year and so forth. I also think there's a connection to how long council terms are and mayoral terms are and how that interplay is with boards and commissions. The one thing, though, that I do want to ask a little bit more about is the term limit, interestingly, you know, in terms of trying to create consistency with other boards, there really are no term limits on any other board, so this will actually be the outlier with this. Which is not necessarily a bad thing. I also thought it was interesting that it's three consecutive terms, meaning somebody could do three terms, take a break for a term, and then come back again and do another three. That's the way I read this language. And I didn't know if that was intentional or if this was seen in other places. So again, I think it's a good idea. I hope that it does encourage more people. I just wanted to kind of maybe probe around, a little bit around the term limit aspect specifically. Maybe the sponsor could speak to it.
Sure. Thank you. Council Khan.
Yeah, thank you, Council President. Actually, the Human Rights Commission does have a term limit, and it's really interesting. They have a two-term limit, and then they cannot serve again till they wait another year, and then they could do again. So we do have, I think it just depends on the nature of the Board and Commission, what works best for them. And with, looking at the Council of Aging, that one, I actually did do some research and looked at other communities to come up with, you know, some actually had it capped at two terms. Part of the reason we came up with three was previously, when it was a five-year term, two terms would be 10 years. So we were just thinking, what would work now? And in talking with Terry Rooney, who's the Board, the current Chair of the Board, it really, for what they were trying to achieve, given her time, I think for the last 15 years being on the Council of Aging, she thought this would be a really good start and would really provide some benefits, again, in getting some new perspectives, kind of rotating people through. So I think this is good. We could, I don't want to call anything as a trial. We're codifying it, and we want to do something, and we want to make it kind of stay there for a while. But if there is any issues, I do think that the feedback loop with the Board to us as a council will happen. And I'm pretty sure, I think, and I actually encourage folks to maybe check out one of their meetings. It was actually really interesting to see what's offered. I do look forward, I'm close to getting to that age, maybe, where I'll be there more, but the number of programs, the yoga, the, I was really excited. So anyways, I hope that answers the questions posed.
Thank you, Council Khan.
Thank you.
Further questions? All right. So, motion to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
I think, I think we need to do a roll.
Ordinance, sorry. Roll call vote.
Motion to approve on first reading. Council McCauley?
Yes.
Council Preston?
Yes.
Council Vogel?
Yes.
Council Wallace?
Yes.
Council Z?
Yes.
Council Cameron?
Yes.
Council Dunnio?
Yes.
Council Khan?
Yes.
Council Lane?
Yes.
Council Shan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anything else from Neighborhood and City Services?
Nothing else except just a reminder that we have, as the Mayor had pointed out, our meeting tomorrow night, hybrid, at 5 o'clock. First item will be the Sidewalk Materials Ordinance. That is not Committee of the Whole. But then after that will be a continuation of the Streets and Sidewalks Plan with a focus on Wards 1, 3, and 5, and that is Committee of the Whole. And I just remembered, I will send out panelist invites tomorrow. And then next week, Tuesday at 5 o'clock, we will be focusing on Wards 2, 4, and 6. Thank you. Nothing further.
Thank you, Council Wallace. Council Cameron, Planning and Development.
Thank you. Motion to approve appointment of Richard Jaeger.
Second.
Discussion.
Thank you. You'll notice I didn't remove it from committee, so I am proving to be adaptable, like we used to in the old days. So Planning and Development, met earlier this evening, all three committee members with Mr. Jaeger. And Chair Sontag and Vice Chair Tainter were also there, as well as Council Z. And we voted three to zero in favor of his appointment. He was here earlier for, and introduced himself for the second time. Wisely went home. I did tell him I thought he'd probably pass. He's a really experienced architect and also very involved in construction and planning. Currently, he's a Director of Real Estate, I think, Real Estate and Construction or Real Estate and Development at UMass Amherst, and it's a hybrid job. He's moved to Newburyport in 2020, was a Boston resident for 30 years, including 12 years on Boston's Landmarks Commission, which is similar to our own historical commission and probably dealing with some very challenging issues. But he talked a lot about stewardship and, you know, he's new to this community, was asked some specific questions about projects and, as one might expect, and I think probably the answer that I would like to hear is if, you know, you don't really know these issues until you've really dug into them, and he displayed, you know, an open mind and certainly wanting to learn, learn the ropes. And, you know, I think he'd be a real asset in a variety of ways, has worked a lot with developers as well, but really has an appreciation for our historic city, and I think he'd be a really solid addition. So asking for your approval.
Further discussion? All those, is it roll call?
Roll call for second reading of the appointment. Council McCauley?
Yes.
Council Preston?
Yes.
Council Vogel?
Yes.
Council Wallace?
Yes.
Council Wright?
Yes.
Council Z?
Yes.
Council Wallace?
Yes.
Council Wright?
Yes.
Council Z?
President.
Council Cameron?
Yes.
Council Dunnio?
Yes.
Council Khan?
Yes.
Council Lane?
Yes.
Council Shan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anything else, Council?
Yes, we're going to have a joint hearing with the Planning Board on April 6 regarding the zoning amendments for the business park uses, so that's including the community center use as well as some various boat, I think it's boat sales. So that'll be coming up on the 6th at 7:00 PM with the Planning Board. And we do have an appointment to the Waterfront Trust that will hopefully meet with that candidate soon. I don't, we have not yet scheduled a next step on short-term rentals, but we'll be looking to do that soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Cameron. Public Safety. Council McCauley.
Thank you, Council President. A motion to receive and file Communication 397.
Motion to.
Second. The committee met with the Health, the new Health Director, Laurie Vlasic, on her first day of work here. And the main gist of the questions we asked was that what were her priorities coming in, in her discussions with the Board of Health, and she cited three of them. Certificate of Habitability, she was, she wants to address landlord issues and make[1664.66] She wants to bring up, she wants to bring up the number of inspections of locations to a more timely status. They were lagging during COVID, and she noticed some of the languages in our ordinances, from what she's seen in other towns, could be cleaner, and will be making some proposals there. Generally, she looks forward to working here, and we expect good things out of her along the way. Thank you.
Further comments or questions? All right. All those in favor of receiving and filing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Anything else?
I do, it's not on the agenda, but one of the things we've been doing at Public Safety is we've been inviting the Department heads of the Departments that we look in to give us some insight into what their objectives are for this year along the way. We talked about the Fire Department before, and our guest this week was Harbor Master Paul Hogg, who gave us quite a list of things that he's been working on, and I'd like to share them with you. I think it's insightful for everyone that's here. He expects a busy boating season again this year. The docks, he plans to put in next week, early, provided the weather holds up, and the ground holds up as well for the crane and so forth. His first project is dredging, and the side dredging, as we know. They do think that, given the mutual arrangement that worked out with the town of Salisbury, and the agreement that they're working on right now, that we'll be able to do the side dredge, as well as the main dredge along the way. Good news for us, it looks like the majority of that sand from the side dredge will be on North Point and Reservation Terrace, so that's good news for us. We've got our permits in place going forward. One of the questions asked by Counsel Wright was that, could we, at this time, move the navigational channel markers? And Paul had said, it's something they've always wanted to do, now with the dredge, they may need some help from us, and from us putting on pressure to our federal delegation to be able to do that going forward. Second item we had was the Bulkhead, as we all know. He wants to be a driving force in that. It's the basis and the cornerstone of how they, you know, they rent their business with the docks, et cetera, along the way. And so he's been very active in that. The third thing is the waterfront park plan involved. He is, you know, being an advocate for those folks down there and the fishing pier along the way. He still thinks there needs to be some work done along, but he's expressed those opinions outward along the way. Four is Riverfest, coming on 7/23. You know, we're all kind of circling the wagons on that, and everyone in Public Safety is trying to make sure that we're prepared as we can be going forward, although we haven't seen the full application come in yet. Number five, the Coast Guard is on 7/1. They have a new change of command, and so he's involved, and his staff is involved in the swap-out of personnel, educating them on some of the nuances within the city itself. And the last thing that he's been involved in is a parking program out at Plum Island, and the parking clerk knows this as well. It's an auto attendant type of scenario. It shouldn't cost us anything. It's a revenue share with the vendor who wants to do that. He believes that it'll give us better statistics of the types of people and people and the uses that go there, and it will not affect staffing, because even though it's an auto attendant, he does plan to have staffing there for directions and bathroom maintenance and things like that along the way. And I think that's, we covered just about everything that the Harbor Master wanted to share with us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Public Utilities.
Nothing to report.
Rules.
Nothing to report.
Good of the Order. Counsel Vogel.
Thank you. Counsel President, I just wanted to speak for a moment about the issue of reconsideration. The issue of reconsideration is simply a tool, and in the, I think it's 14 years that I've sat in this room doing this business, I believe I've seen reconsideration. Tonight would be the third time. The first one, I don't remember what it was, but the second one I do recall, and that was being on the affirmative side of the marijuana zoning. And we brought that back, and in hindsight, from my perspective, we shouldn't have brought it back, but we did, we brought it back, and it all fell apart. But nonetheless, it is a tool, and it is a tool that is available to us. It's not awful, it's not the end of the world, and for that matter, it beats filibuster. Thank you.
Counsel Ryan?
I just wanted to voice a couple of concerns, and it was a little bit, Coach Zede earlier, and it's in regards to the letter that came in, that was a late file. The letter wasn't late filed, it was in plenty of time. So I'd love to get more clarity around why it is a late file. And just remind the Council that, and when I came in, this is an apolitical body, so when things don't come in that are to our liking, the residents still have a opportunity and a voice that they can speak. Whether you agree with it or not, they get that opportunity. I'm really disheartened that it got received and filed tonight, and then right afterward, we didn't do the same thing. We're not, we're not following a process here. It's picking and choosing, and it's very disheartening to me. My other thing is, and it goes along with Counsel Preston, you know, I had the field cleanup at the Pioneer League, and those fields are awful. And we're looking at putting money, endless amounts of money in the waterfront. There's other parks in this community, and I think it's time to start giving back to the residents, rather than the visitors that come here. For far too long, it's been neglected. I'd love to see more money get put into the parks, specifically the Pioneer League, Perkins, Cashman, any fields with, baseball fields have just been neglected, nonstop. We took away three to build the Brezner Hand, replaced one, kinda, and it's just, it's always passed over. So now it's pickleball, tennis courts, waterfront parks, bathrooms. When do we start giving back to our kids? A lot of this voice with, you know, NYSS, and where to put this, and we're all about kids, I don't think it's true. I don't see it as, I don't see it as, you know, putting your money where your mouth is. So I'd just like to echo that, just voice my opinion here in the Good of the Order, and just be mindful that we are an apolitical body.
Counsel Donahue.
With all due respect, I would like to strongly disagree with Ward 6 Counselor. I think that that letter that came in was so politically driven that to accept it for anything other than a receive and file would have polarized this Council into a political arena. That would have been wrong. The content of that letter is not within the purview of the City Council or anything we do, and that's why I voted to receive and file it. Thank you.
Further comments for the Good of the Order? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.